All right, well, it's six o'clock straight up. Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, January 4th, 2023, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For the meditator, we have for the roll call present, we have Wade Elliott, Hench, Townsend, Sines, and Craig, and I believe Commissioner Padron will be joining us via Zoom shortly. We will know when she is online. Next item up on the agenda is public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If there's any member of the public that's present who would like to address the commission for an item not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. So anybody would like to address anything not on the agenda? Second call. Seeing no one, we'll go on to the next item. So the first thing under development items, item number four, case number REZ22-0015. Location is north of West Benton Street and west of Orchard Street. This is an application for rezoning of approximately 3.52 acres of land from low density, single family residential with a planned development overlay in Riverfront Crossing Orchard to Riverfront Crossing Orchard. Anne?
Thank you, I'm Anne Russit with Neighborhood and Development Services, and Maria, I'm just going to admit her now. She just joined. Maria, can you hear us? Hello, Maria, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me? Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm late.
All right, hello, Maria, welcome.
Hi.
Go ahead, Anne.
Anne, could you fix the lights up there before you?
Yeah, let me get this.
I know, you've got to run multitask and do the whole thing yourself, I mean.
Okay, Maria, can you see the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
All right, very good.
There we go.
Okay, as the chair mentioned, this is a proposed rezoning of approximately three and a half acres to Riverfront Crossings Orchard. At your last meeting, the commission deferred this item to today's meeting at the applicant's request. The request was due to concerns with the original conditions that staff was proposing for the rezoning. Staff has revised the conditions and believes that the applicant is agreeable to them, and I'll go over the conditions later in this report. First, here is a map of the proposed rezoning area. As you can see, the property is currently developed.
And the map hasn't come on our screen.
I think you. Let's see here.
We had a flicker. There you go. There it went.
Maybe.
There we go.
There we go. Okay, now I need to share this.
I can, I can see it now.
Okay, can everyone see it? Okay, very good, okay. I think we're set. So the area is already developed. There's a mix of housing types. There's single family duplex duplexes and fourplexes in this area. In total, there's approximately 24 dwelling units within the proposed rezoning area. This is the map of the current zoning. As you can see, a portion of the area is already zoned Riverfront Crossings Orchard, and that was rezoned back in 2018. That's the portion to the south. To the north, within the subject area, that is zoned, plan, a single family residential with the planned development overlay. Terms of background, this area was included into the Riverfront Crossings and Downtown Master Plan in 2016. The master plan was amended to create the Orchard District. As you can see here on the map, that area there in brown was added to the Riverfront Crossings District. And in 2017, the Riverfront Crossings Form Based Code was amended to include Orchard District standards. In 2018, a portion of the subject property was rezoned to Riverfront Crossings Orchard, subject to several conditions. Since this came up at the last meeting, I wanted to let the commission know that the proposed pedestrian improvements for the area along South Riverside Drive underneath the Iowa Interstate Railroad is planned to start in May of 2023. The Public Works Department plans to request bids this winter and hopefully start construction in the spring. The applicant has held two Good Neighbor meetings for the proposed rezoning. The first was in September of 2022, and they presented a concept that did not align with the master plan or the Form Based Code. Based on feedback from staff and members of the public, they have revised their concept, and they held a second Good Neighbor meeting in November of 2022. This is the concept that they shared at the meeting. As you can see, they're proposing three separate multifamily buildings. There is a pedestrian street that is required. That's part of the regulating plan that would be part of any development within this area, but there's nothing in the rezoning that would tie the developer to this particular concept. They also propose some elevations, but again, the rezoning doesn't tie the developer to these elevations or this concept. In terms of the proposed zone, the Riverfront Crossings Orchard Zone, it is a form based zone that regulates scale and form. There's no maximum density. It allows multifamily development. There's a maximum height of three stories, and unlike some of the other Riverfront Crossing zones, this zone does not allow any bonus height, so the max is three stories. It does require a 10-foot step back above the second story as well, and a 30-foot setback from any adjacent single family. The pedestrian street, which I identified, that runs north and south, helps to ensure smaller scale buildings as it would require the buildings to be broken up. In terms of rezoning approval criteria, we look at two criteria. One is consistency with the comprehensive plan, and the second is compatibility with the existing neighborhood. First, in terms of the comprehensive plan, the guiding policy document for this area is the Riverfront Crossings Master Plan. The guiding policy direction anticipates that this area will be redeveloped and will be rezoned to Riverfront Crossings Orchard Zone. Some of the objectives is redevelopment that is complementary in mass and scale to the adjacent single family and to provide the transition between the larger buildings along South Riverside Drive and the single family further west. In terms of compatibility with the existing neighborhood, the standards within the Riverfront Crossings Orchard Zone help to ensure neighborhood compatibility. As I mentioned, there's the three-story height max, the 10-foot setback above the second story, the increased separation from adjacent residential, as well as the pedestrian street to help reduce the scale. Staff is recommending a condition that a 30-foot public access easement be placed over that pedestrian street to ensure that it is open to the public and all pedestrians in the area. In terms of transportation and access, there was a traffic study that was completed in 2018 as part of that rezoning. It looked at the intersection of Benton Street and Riverside Drive, as well as the intersection of Orchard Street and Benton Street. Based on that traffic study, it was determined that the Benton Street and Riverside Drive intersection would operate at an acceptable level of service. However, the Orchard Street and Benton Street intersection would operate at an unacceptable level of service during peak hours. So those morning hours and afternoon hours. The 2018 rezoning estimated an additional 20 to 30 trips during peak hours. And this proposed rezoning includes approximately 65 more residential units would result in substantially more traffic generation than the 20 to 30 trips that were looked at in that 2018 study. Due to the traffic impacts that would be caused by the proposed rezoning, staff is recommending several conditions to address those impacts. The first is a signalization of the Benton Street and Orchard Street intersection, which would likely also require some intersection improvements such as turn lanes. Additionally, we're recommending construction of a six-foot wide sidewalk along West Benton Street and a five-foot wide sidewalk along Orchard Street, dedication of additional right-of-way along West Benton and Orchard Street, and also the reconstruction of Orchard Street north of West Benton. Staff has had previously recommended a condition that would require the owner to re-subdivide this area through the final plating process, and we have removed that condition, but we wanted to continue to ensure that the public improvements, such as the traffic signalization, were installed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So that would still remain one of our recommended conditions. Staff has received five pieces of correspondence related to this application, which were included in your agenda packet. Just to very quickly summarize some of the concerns, the letters speak for themselves, but the main concerns were related to traffic, cut-through traffic, and parking. Staff does recommend approval of REZ22-0015, a proposal to rezone approximately three and a half acres to Riverfront Crossings Orchard Zone, subject to several conditions, including prior to site plan approval for any development that the owner enter into an agreement with the city, providing for the construction of public improvements or the provision of an improvements escrow prior to issuance of a building permit. However, in all cases, the public improvements shall be constructed prior to certificate of occupancy, and those improvements shall include the six-foot wide sidewalk along West Benton Street, the five-foot wide sidewalk along Orchard Street, traffic signalization and associated intersection improvements, and then the reconstruction of Orchard Street in a manner approved by the city engineer. Prior to issuance of building permit, the owner shall dedicate the 30-foot wide public access easement along that pedestrian street and also dedicate right-of-way, subject to approval of the city engineer and any additional easements that would be necessary for the proposed development. Upon recommendation from the Planning Commission, the public hearing will be scheduled for consideration by the city council. The anticipated timeline is that the council would set the public hearing on January 10th and hold the public hearing in first consideration on January 24th. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Anne. Any members of the commission have questions for staff on this application? Susan? I saw you lean in.
Could you go back to the layout of the buildings? There we go. I don't understand. Understand these three buildings. At first, I thought the dark things were the buildings, but they aren't. The big square is the building, the dark, the big square is the building, and the dark things are things on their roofs. Is that correct?
This is the building here, one building.
Okay, it took me a while to figure that out. I thought, boy, these are weird-looking buildings.
These are, these are like open space areas.
Like atriums.
Oh, atriums, okay. Interesting. All right. And where is the parking?
The parking, as they're proposing it now, is within this building here.
All that parking?
Yeah.
The other two buildings don't have parking?
That's correct. They, their parking is within this structure.
And how many parking spots are, I mean, if this was the planal thing?
So they're proposing 189 units, and the parking ratios are based on the number of beds that each of those units have. So it would be, it would be based on, you know, how many three bedrooms, how many two bedrooms, how many efficiencies that they're proposing. And I don't think they're that far along in the design to know how many parking spaces would be required.
What's the, what's the required ratio?
So for an efficiency or a one-bedroom, it's 0.75 spaces per unit. For a two-bedroom, it's one and a half spaces per unit, and then three-bedroom is two and a half spaces per unit. And any affordable units wouldn't require any parking.
So if the average was a one-bedroom, that's 189 parking spaces?
It'd be 0.75 times 189.
I mean, if the average was a two-bedroom, that would be 189.
It'd be more than that. Yeah.
And can, will there be parking on the street?
There will be parking on the street, depending on the width of Orchard, and if it's reconstructed to 28-foot width, it would require, it would allow parking on both sides. If it's 26 feet, it would allow parking on one side.
And that would come late, that decision would come later?
Yeah.
I also have a question about putting a light at that intersection. I mean, several of the letters, and I have to agree with them. I mean, I can envision people trying to come across Riverside Drive and having no place to go because there's a red light there. I mean, literally there. And it concerns me a lot. What do our traffic people say about that?
The Public Works and our transportation planning staff have looked at this, and they believe that the signalization is the best way to improve traffic in this area.
Can you share a little bit of their why they think that?
Well, there is not, first of all, there's not that many other options. It'll help with, it'll make it safer. It'll make people trying to get places safer, especially if they're turning left along Orchard. So right now, I think, right now, there is a lot of traffic in that area at peak hours, and this is going to add traffic, right?
Right.
And so there's no signalization.
And so I have a friend who lives at Oaknall, and I go up that Benton, and I'm usually coming from Crossing Riverside there. And it's not a fun trip, and it was torn up all summer.
Yeah, and um, I lost my train of thought here, but right, right now, people who are traveling south on Orchard and want to turn left during peak hours would have a really difficult time doing that. If you add a traffic signal, it'll make it much safer.
Okay, but they don't think what I just said, which was what I envisioned happening, is people crossing Riverside going west are going to have, they're going to be in the middle of Riverside Drive because the traffic's backed up at that red light, and they have no place to go.
They'll, they'll have to have the signalization function in a way so they're timed.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Any other members of the commission? Go ahead.
Could you give me the process? Go through that again, because we're reviewing the rezoning. And then when the concept comes back, that, is that an administrative review?
It would be administrative. It would, it would need to go through design review, and the Form Based Code Committee would need to review it, and they would need site plan application as well and building permits, which would all be administrative. Okay. They, they are, at this time, proposing a vacation of public right-of-way, which would come back to the commission, but we haven't received an application for that.
Where would that be?
In this area up here. Right here, you can see this is the existing right-of-way here. And if you look at the concept, it changes.
Do you know how many units are in that existing fairly new building there?
Oh, this one?
Because they access in and out through Orchard too, don't they?
No, I don't know off the top of my head.
Anne, could you refresh my memory of, I remember in 2018 when we rezoned the south parcel to Riverfront Crossings Orchard. Have we talked about this area any other time other than that?
Besides the rezoning, there was a vacation of public right-of-way with that as well.
Because I remember at the time, the big concern was traffic and there's a, isn't there like a drainage area through there? And I'm trying to dig deep in my memory of the issues people brought forth.
There is right in here. This is actually a city-owned
Okay.
lot that gase water for stormwater management.
Yeah, I got a few questions. So a question on the resubdivide. Initially, that was a request, then I got de-scope, so can you give me a little understanding on that?
Yeah, we, staff was originally proposing that the applicant re-subdivide and replat this through the final plat process. And the main concern that we had were the public improvements related to traffic signalization, turn lanes, reconstruction of Orchard Court. Although, public improvements don't have to come at plating, they can come at site plan. Our main concern was ensuring that those public improvements were in place before anyone is occupying any new building in this area. And we think we have addressed that with the condition related to that those improvements be installed and accepted by the city prior to certificate of occupancy. So we feel like our main concern is still being addressed, but not requiring the plating.
And then, if I saw it correctly, in like a first public meeting, that originally this might have been one larger structure, and then this has been broken down into three structures. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So upon, let's say, for example, zoning would be approved. Is there anything that maintains the spirit of this three-structure proposal versus going back to a single larger structure?
Well, the original concept also included these properties here. And it was basically a building like this. So with this rezoning, that would not allow to, it would not be allowed. The pedestrian street here is required by the zoning code. So this pedestrian street is going to have to be installed, even if they reconfigure the layout a little bit. The other thing that is kind of a constraint for this property is fire access. So I don't see how they, they're going to have to provide fire access to the rear of these buildings. So although the concept, this concept, it's, it's not going to be required that they are, you know, substantially comply with this concept as part of the rezoning. They're definitely going to have to have the pedestrian street and ensure some type of fire access.
And with that pedestrian street remain, is there anything that limits the pedestrian access to where it's demonstrated here? Or could it be shifted?
It needs to stay there because it's on the regulating plan. So if you can see here, that little navy blue colored line, it needs to be in that location.
Billy?
My concern is the fact that they're not going to have any affordable housing, that they're going to pay the fee in lieu. And this is an area where there is bus access and access to all the things that, well, people that are needing that housing would also need the affordable housing piece. Is there any way we could guarantee some affordable housing in that area in that?
Well, they, they are required to meet our affordable housing requirements, and our affordable housing requirements do provide the option to pay a fee in lieu of providing it onsite. So if they don't provide them onsite, they would need to pay a fee to the city's Affordable Housing Fund. And it's my understanding that that's the route that they would like to take, is the fee-in-lie route.
Even though they have, there was, there was affordable housing in that area before.
Yeah, that's what they would, that's what they're proposing.
Anything else? Mark?
Yes, I was gonna, I knew, I believe that there was a city lot involved there, and you confirmed that. Is there anything that would prohibit an additional access street from being put over that lot?
That's something that we had considered with the 2018 rezoning, and with that rezoning, we recommended a condition of 30-foot wide access easement that would be placed here. At the time of that rezoning, it only included this area here. And staff felt that if we received any future development proposals for this area, that a signal would be required at Benton and Orchard. And so now that we have a proposal that includes more area, we're recommending the signal as opposed to a secondary access.
And what's the logic for that?
Well, this is, they would need to get permission from the city to either acquire that lot or get an easement to provide that access. There is some natural features in this area. There's a stream corridor and some vegetation. Any additional pavement in this area would probably be more impactful to the neighbors. And with the signalization, staff feels like, based on the proposal, that that's the best way to deal with the increased traffic at this time.
Any other questions from commission for staff? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing if the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Good evening, Brian Belk, Axiom Consultants, here representing the applicant, aptitude. Mike Welch with Welch Design Development is also with me as well as part of the design team. Aptitude is not able to make it here tonight, but they do plan on being at the next meeting or council meeting if it goes further. They're on travels with holidays right now, so, excuse me, I got a little bit of a science infection and cough here. But happy to answer any questions you may have. I'll touch on a few things too that you already brought up, and thank you for the presentation, Anne, and we've been working with city staff diligently to try to continue to evolve this project. As already noted, it started as one larger mass building and quite an impact. We had a really good dialogue in the first Good Neighbor meeting with a lot of the residents and neighbors, a couple of which are here tonight, which was very informative, and I think we really took that to heart, as well as with a discussion with staff, took that back to the developer, applicant, and the architect, and really did a lot of revising over the past several months here to one big, large mass building to two, three smaller buildings. There was actually a reduction of almost 60 units during those revisions and a reduction of a little over 100 beds in that timeframe as well. So there was accommodations made, and even to the point of that second access, there was a second access originally looked at with that larger one mass building in the original concept, and we talked to city staff about that. There was a lot of concern from the neighbors with that of having another street out that close to those residences. But we've continued to work with traffic, MPO, Public Works and Traffic Engineering. They, as Anne alluded to, are confident in traffic signalization working. There would be timing that would be interactive with the other signals already on place in Riverside. So there are ways to do that so that that timing is interconnected with the other signal to prevent that queuing within that intersection. Always a rightful question, and so there'd be a lot of that with a signalization to make sure queuing and timing works to accommodate those concerns. Turn lanes was also the other item that's been discussed and adding left turn lanes on Benton Street to the north and south of Orchard to help alleviate traffic flow as well that is looking to turn in either direction and keep the through street going on Benton Street. Parking, as again, as Anne alluded to, that north building is really a parking ramp within that, that north building there. It's three levels, and then you have liner units on the outside of that. So there's a lower-level parking, first second-level parking that have liner units, townhome look around the outside, and then a third level is just residential, no parking ramp on that. And that's where you can see those courtyards or those gaps in between that building that we were talking about earlier, and those are like atrium courtyard scenarios. Again, we don't have the exact count, but just to give you a reference, Susan, on that. Again, we don't have the exact count, but just to give you a reference, Susan, on that, like right now, based on unit and bed count, we're somewhere in at two hundred and eighty-three parking stalls, which we're accounting for within that parking ramp itself. But again, that's fluctuating will be based on the total number of units on the studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom at the end of the design there. Trying to think, we noted the affordable housing, they're well aware of the requirement there and will fully meet that. They have not yet finally determined how that's going to be met. The fee-in-lu of has been, or fee-in-lu has been mentioned and certainly addressed. And I think that's, you know, the one of the directions they're going for, but they are still looking at options in terms of affordable housing within the building itself too. So they they understand that and what is there now and and certainly haven't totally taken that off the table, but continuous discussions and and certainly know and acknowledge that we need to meet those requirements and and will do so in one way or the other or combination thereof. And I should add to it and and allude to it already too, but they totally acknowledge and accept all the conditions that have been placed on this per the city staff and what you're seeing here tonight. Happy to answer any other questions.
Brian, on the structure, the north structure with the liner units around the parking ramp, would that look in apparent similar to the current structure that's on South to Peak Street?
It would be similar to that, yes.
I think that looks really sharp.
Yep, you're you're exactly right. With those liner units on that side, so it's covering, you don't, you don't know there's a parking ramp within there.
Okay, then another question about parking. When will the determination be made on the width of the street, the street twenty-six versus twenty-eight feet? I think it's kind of important to know parking options for that. Have you folks?
Yeah, we've had some discussions with Public Works and and city staff as a whole and traffic. There was no final determination that I recall, Mike, yet made on that, but we've acknowledged that either of those is a consideration. I don't think to our knowledge, the applicant developer cares either way. We will, we will certainly design and build that to what city staff feels is necessary there. But yeah.
My last question. Couple years ago, we rezoned a property just north of here and sort of felt like a bait switch occurred on that one on the rezoning. How and and I know you can't answer this with certainty, but how strongly or closely do you think at this time you'll be adhering to this current concept?
Yeah, no, totally understand that. Yeah. Very strongly. I mean, so aptitude development, that's, this is what they do is multifamily housing geared towards student housing. Though there's no requirements for that, but that's certainly what they gear towards. And they've done it around, all around the nation in a number of college towns and have quite a bit of proof and evidence of that. Their intent all along is that that's what this is, you know, really the biggest change they've seen or seen was originally we wanted that one larger mass building and just wasn't going to work here. And and like I said, they've been very good in continually to kind of downsize and and reconfigure that. But they're ready to get going. They understand. And we've actually talked about the project you were speaking of and and gave them notice of that. And they fully acknowledge that. We just talked to them yesterday about that. Yeah.
My other question. Just so the public is aware, so the ten-foot step back stories above second story, could you just explain what that is? Where that is the step back just on a certain side, all sides? And would it look similar to the step backs at the bill, the new building, which I like a lot, just north of Orchard? That multi-colored building rezoned in eighteen, I really like the way that looks.
And Ann might be able to speak to that better than I even on the step back requirements, but yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna need to, that's a, that's a good question, Mike. They're, they're gonna need it on the frontages.
And the reason I bring that up because people are rightfully always concerned about the height of a building if you're having adjacent single families family home. And to understand with that step back, how that's gonna look much different than just a three-story wall next to you.
Yeah, so they will be required along the street frontages, along Orchard, along Benton. They will also be required to do it along the pedestrian street because that's considered a street frontage. And I believe it's also required along the residential side.
I guess I lied. One more question. A fire department access to the back of the structure, your parking ramp with the liner structures, I don't see really where you're gonna do that at on the west side.
Yeah, we've been, we've been working with the Fire Marshal. We've actually had two or three different meetings with with the previous and the new Fire Marshal discussing that. And I think we're working through that in a very positive direction. They're understanding what we're trying to do and and likewise with our hose length and our truck access to that. So again, there might be some additional modifications in terms of length or where that fire lane goes to to make sure we're covering that reach. But we've talked about in terms of design and building code to go in full thirteen in terms of sprinkler mode and also stand pipes and things like that within the building itself too, to help facilitate that fire protection that they they need and they want. But yeah, we've had several meetings with Fire Marshal.
I guess one more question. This is probably just an engineered question for you. As we know, this intersection of Orchard and Benton has been kind of a mess because, you know, there's just no traffic controls there. So with the conditions the city has listed in this memorandum and with the signalization from an engineering standpoint, it seems to me that that would improve what we have now dramatically.
Yes.
Would you agree with that as an?
I would agree with that, yes. Yeah, and we've talked about that with with Kent Ralston and others and looking at some of the traffic counts that were from the previous traffic study and noting, yeah, and noting that absolutely.
Very last question. So I I remember for twenty eighteen, there's a lot of concerns of the neighbors about the the, in that green area, the drainage to the west side. By adding more impervious surface, will that increase water load into that drainage area?
Yeah, that will certainly need to be evaluated. Part of that, as we continue through the designer view in the site plan process, those storm calls and everything are gonna play themselves out. We've actually had a number of conversations with property owners along there and the Roof family and in particular on that stormwater management. You know, again, originally at one time when it was one mass building, we were looking at those four parcels, including that city by Iowa City parcel and like, how are we gonna deal with this and manage the stormwater underground? And there was some comments about the look of that drainage area and how they like it and everything else too, so.
So you'd have to get the city engineer to agree with the stormwater management of that.
Absolutely.
Good question. In the last meeting that I attended, we talked about the plugins for electric cars. Are you gonna, is that gonna be a part of these buildings?
We've had some discussions on that with the design team and Architect Napkin. I don't know where that's landed to date, but I know that has been in discussion. Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. I think that's actually a really good thing. You did, that we would like to see with these larger scale things going forward because that absolutely is the direction we're gonna go. So I think it saves the developer money upfront to do it, right, construction.
Absolutely. I'll I'll add to that. Within that same discussion, I know there's been talks on on solar panels and and things like that too on the roof. So we have had that solar and EV and and sustainability topics going on. Yeah.
Mark?
Is this the same developer that came before us for the twenty eighteen?
It is not.
It is not. And do you, do you know, has this developer developed any other properties in our market?
Not, not here locally to my knowledge. No. Yeah, the architect, yeah, well, good point. The architect has, the architect on the team is the same architect that was part of seven hundred South Dubuque in the Gilbein project there.
Chad, Maggie, Susan?
Yeah, back to parking again. I just, I have a huge problem here, which only one way out and all those cars and and you know the parking won't be adequate. Do you see, and I know this can change, but conceptually, would you assign the parking spaces to a unit? So I mean, say somebody gets off work at second shift at UIHC and they drive home and there's no place to park in that garage. Where are they gonna go?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. I don't know how they've done that in the past on on other buildings they've done, if they have assigned permanent parking, you know, per assigned stall, certainly can can inquire about that.
It's less important when there's more surface streets or more places to go to park and and there, I just there isn't here. And and you know, so somebody has a party. And again, that second shift person from UIHC comes home after working all day at a hospital and there's no place to park and they think they have a parking space, but they don't.
Sure. That was probably the, Susan, for my concern about the twenty-eight versus twenty-six foot for the road. So there is that on-street parking available for guests. That's, I feel more I think about, I feel more strongly about that.
Yeah. And and you know, we had some parking discussions again at our meeting earlier this week with applicant. Let it go. And one of the things they talked about was certainly the need to meet city code. Obviously, number one, with number of parking stalls they provide, but number two, that they don't want to do themselves a disservice either with their own tenants and rentals. You know, they're like, if we're giving somebody a unit, they don't have parking, we're gonna hear it first thing and we're not gonna have them renting, you know, again, next year. So I think they fully acknowledge and understand that too. And I think have enough projects under the belt to to know and have a good feel for what that parking requirement is. But obviously, again, needing to read code and and have some.
I just think, given the constraints of the site and the fact that you can't get anywhere from there that they may think they know, but they don't know. I mean, I'm just saying, this is this is not a general kind of plonk it in a cornfield. And you know, if they don't fit in the ramp, too bad, they'll just park in the cornfield. I mean, okay.
Brian, who makes the decision on the width of the roadway? Is that the city engineers in conjunction with you folks or how's that made?
Yeah, I mean, yes, yes, it'd be city engineer and Public Works. Correct.
What's the decision criteria on that?
I mean, that's a good question, Mike. I mean, I I think it just would depend on, obviously, there there are the couple options that we've already talked about. Some of that's just in this, I don't know, we haven't really had any more discussion on it, right, Mike?
I think at our I think at the the meeting we did have with Kent and Jason, I I think that was seen that that having parking at least on the west side of Orchard Street is probably a good thing. On the east side, you have the Come and Go driveway and the other building. So again, we don't know, but my guess is that's gonna be the recommendation is that twenty-eight feet and has parking on the west side.
And where does the bus stop now there? Does it go down to the corner? Because there is a bus that goes up Benton, isn't there?
There, there's a bus stop right here that goes down Riverside.
Yeah.
And they stop on Riverside or on Benton?
They stop on Riverside.
Is there not a bus that goes on Benton right there?
I don't believe so.
Okay, it's changed. Okay.
Any other questions for Brian?
Yeah, one question. You can observe now the Come and Go location, but that it serves as a cut through. Especially on a red light on Riverside Drive. With this, it would appear that Come and Go and then the existing apartment structure will also serve as that with those connected streets. Is there anything that comes in? I guess who influences trying to mitigate that cut-through path?
Yeah, no, it's a good point. We've we've discussed that as well too, and or at least thought about that. As well as that, that being an open option. I don't know. You know what good answers there are to that, being that those are, again, other private properties and there's, I think it's one of those that will generally what we see is it works itself out, right? If a number of people are continually to do that and they're hitting Riverside traffic, they're not getting out any quicker because they're all doing it. Everybody kind of learns that this isn't going to work as a cut-through. Beyond that, I I don't know if there's anything to help restrict that any further. But fully understand where you're coming from. We've talked about that as well.
Well, they could cut through and have a red light. Because there's gonna be a light there.
Right. Yeah, and that's what Mike just made a good point to, right? Exactly. That signalization on Orchard will help a lot with that because that's a lot of why they're cutting through now is because they can't get out onto Benton. And so hopefully that signal will allow that to to give them those windows to do so.
Other questions? Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Mike? Do you have anything you want to add? Any, any questions for Mike? All right, you're off the hook. This is public hearing. Are there any members of the public who'd like to address commission on this application? If so, we've come forward and please sign in, let us know your name and where you live. And I'll start the timer for five minutes after you tell us who you are.
My name is Paula Swigert and I live at four twenty-six Douglas Street. And I'll have to talk fast. I have to start by saying I really don't envy you. This is a very complicated thing to look at. You're being asked to re-prove a rezoning that will have a monumental impact on this area. And you really don't have much to go on except blind faith and a list of conditional zoning agreements. Because it's form-based, you don't have the actual concept that they're required to stick with. You don't have exactly how the open space requirement will be met. You don't have, you do have the height. That's one thing you do have. Good for you. But you don't know exactly how many number of units this will be. The mass of the building, you really don't have a concept for the mass. And actually, one of you just referred to this as a larger-scale development. But the zoning for this area is to be a lower density area. And it's right there in the plan, right there in the in the code. I could try to explain what it's actually like to live here. But you know, and there are times of the day when it is a little difficult. I've run into that when I used to work to turn, to make a turn to the west off of Orchard. It works itself out. Like you say, with the cut-through, people learn, you you find an alternate route. Then there are many times of the day when the signalization will actually stop traffic that's flowing because there's not that much traffic maybe between two and three in the afternoon. But then now I gotta stop for a traffic light because it's all coordinated. So I have unnecessary stops. One thing that has not been addressed and I've been talking about it for years. I know all of the plans, the Southwest District Plan, the Miller Orchard Neighborhood Plan, and yes, we have our own plan that was approved by city council and riverfront crossings. Is the impact of all of this traffic that will be generated on Hudson and Miller Streets? Those cut-through streets go from Benton over to the highway. So people are gonna come out of this development. They're gonna make a right-hand turn because they don't wanna go through the highway way to go over to Walmart and all these, and that's gonna increase the traffic there. We've had traffic studies done already in those areas. They're old. But at that time, they showed that the traffic was over what should it, what it should be. And we qualified for traffic calming that was never put into place. You don't know the affordable housing. They've kind of danced around that subject and and you're right, they're taking out afford, this is an affordable area of town to live in compared to other areas. But again, as is typically done in Iowa City, they remove that and replace it with high-rent, higher-rent housing. The traffic all you have to go on is it's substantially more. That's that word in itself. Substantially. I mean, it's gonna be a lot. And let's see. We know, somebody already mentioned, we just went through two years of reconstructing Orchard Street. Two years of extreme inconvenience for our area. Parking, you know, it's not gonna be enough. I mean, that's just the way it is. They, you have an, nobody's asked whether they plan to convert any of the parking spaces to motorcycle or moped parking.
Could you wrap it up, Paula, please?
They can do. So one last thing, I'm trying to make it quick. So if the only thing I would ask, if you're going to approve this, is could you please consider requiring an opaque fence or wall S five screening between residential properties? And any development that happens, we have a lot of cut through people that that walk through yards all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else like to address the commission? You, you get your chances this time. Sir? Yes, sir. If you'd leave your comments to us, please. So yeah, thank you very much.
He's just been, they've been great to work with all of them.
I appreciate that. If you'd sign in and just give us your name, please. And thank you for coming back.
I worked it out pretty well last time, I at least came an hour late. Okay, so.
Your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken Rue, R E W. And we live at just to the west of the city lot, right there where the creek runs through back there. And this may not mean a lot to you, but we bought that house forty five years ago next week. And our daughter lives right beside us. And our son and his wife live across the street, and that's Rueville. So anyway, that was talking about affordable type housing. Even though it's on West Benton Street, that's been our little piece of heaven since we moved there, and my wife still talks about how much she loves it every year. So other people said, well, it's a nice starter home. But we're finishing there no matter what. So anyway, and we've enjoyed the neighborhood, getting to know a few neighbors, and we've loved that creek that comes wraps around right behind our backyard and around our garage and everything. We sit back in there, we always said Benton Street's busy. But it's amazingly quieter back, right back in there. And we'll sit, we've got a daughter in law that's got mental problems, but she relaxes back there where you can just watch that, watch the creek, I'm sorry. And it's just peaceful, all kinds of little wildlife type and stuff. And so when we were told that they were now going to, at one point, going to take those three other houses and the empty lot and pave over the creek and all of that, we were literally devastated. And I mean, I cannot describe it. But then this last meeting, then we were told that, okay, they won't take those. The plan is not to take those houses or the empty lot. So we get to keep our little piece of heaven. And I'm hoping it stays like that. And I agree with Billy Townsend with the, that sort of affordable housing, and it always has been, not rundown housing. It's not, it's not like falling down or trash. In fact, some of them had different improvements over the years. And so it's true that you would be taking, you're taking away affordable housing to, but in less affordable housing. And and I know that big structure is still going to happen. But I really do feel like it totally changes the the neighborhood to put that many more units and that much more traffic and our little piece of heaven. And I know some other people that feel that way, too. And so the whole thing saddens me, but I understand it, that's progress. I guess I understand it. But those are my concerns. And then the other one that you mentioned with having a barrier, a good fence of some kind, because people will just run right through that empty lot and those other yards, too, to come over to Benton Street if there's not actually a physical barrier of some kind instead of bushes. And I like the bushes idea, but anyway, that's, thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else like to address the commission on this application? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, we'll close the public hearing.
Does, does, would Paula have an option for a second? Visit to the podium?
Yes, for two minutes. Do you want to speak again?
You don't have to, I just, I know you were rushed.
Well, that's because I have a lot to say here.
All right, go ahead and start, please.
Okay, the only, I would like to talk about the parking on the street parking that you're concerned about. There really isn't any place to put on street parking there. Like they mentioned, the come and go is there. There you, you can't have parking and then trying to get in and out of come and go. There is a little bit of parking now on the west side. There's a lot of curb cuts there that would disappear. But at the same time, I can't remember what the signage says about parking there. But there's tons of parking tickets written there. Whenever I look at the police log for my area, it's just constant, constant, constant. So that's all I'd like to add.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, now we'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion on this application, please?
I move approval of REZ twenty two dash zero zero one five.
A motion by science, is there a second?
Second by Elliot.
Second by Elliot. Discussion. Actually, just a Brian question. So we have the waterway to the left, to the west. But I see on the the concept plan presented, there's vegetation on the south side of that one structure and the west side of the other. Is that going to be like to an S three standard or just give me information about that?
Yeah, so that's representing certainly, you know, proposed landscaping and screening. Obviously, there'd be screening requirements based by city code. I know we have talked about, and Paula mentioned fence or some possible structural screening as well, in addition to vegetation. We've talked to the applicant about that. I don't think there's any objection to that at all. That's, you know, was really needed, so, but yeah, that's just representing landscaping and screening.
All right, thank you. Because I, I, I'm very sympathetic and agree that if you're next to a taller structure like that, screening would be nice. I'm not a fan of fences, people are going to cut through, people do what they do. But using natural barriers with like an S three through that area, I think that's a pretty good idea. I'm in favor of this application. I think the development of this area has turned out really well. Well, we've rezoned the south portion in twenty eighteen. This is just doing the same thing consistently with the north. I think the the traffic control measures will actually improve what's going on there because right now it can be a mess at times. I personally am guilty of cutting through Miller and Hudson. And so I'll just confess guilty. So, but I think this will help. The whole point of Riverfront Crossings is what this concept is of improving density. I just, I'm a fan, I really like the liner buildings. I think it's been a success, the structure that we have in South Dubuque Street now. And that that concept has been proven to be successful. And I, it's an innovative way to deal with parking, and I hope we can continue with that innovation. But I would like us to see, to add a condition of adding screening to the areas that don't have natural vegetation that are on the areas next to single family residential. Mark, you.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with most of what you said. You know, I, I have several issues with with the project. And I'll try to be brief, which you know, I struggle with. You know, I remember back when we, when we first looked at rezoning this Riverfront Crossing, and we looked at the last development proposal. It could so much, a lot of discussion about this being a transition area. And I, and I was in, that's mentioned in the staff report, I believe, and, and, you know, some of the accompanying documents we had in our packet. And, and, and I, I think that the the twenty eighteen proposal, one, it didn't include the large section to the north. And it, it seemed to me like it didn't include as much on the south section either. And it seems like the all sections have grown significantly to where this is a pretty massive project in my estimation. I don't see any green there, much green at all, except trees on the streets. You know, I don't see a lot of green space. I see a hundred, what was it, a hundred and eighty nine units? And in the number of cars and installs, I am familiar with the with the the liner concept of the of the parking garage. And I would agree, that's much, much preferable to that versus just a parking garage being visible. I question, I also question, you know, a lot of Paula pointed out, the the language in the RFCO zone, talking about pedestrian friendly streetscapes and street facing entries. I question the the number of street facing entries that we're going to see in this project when it's finally developed. And, and as you mentioned, unfortunately, this development is, I guess, coming at a time when several of us feel recently burned about a proposal that turned out to be nothing like what we were, we were sold at the rezoning level. So we've, so we're, I'll be honest, much more, I'm personally much more cautious than I'm, than I was two months ago. I, I'm concerned. One about fire access, because we hear so much about that also. And here's another project that really doesn't have, in my mind, adequate fire access. You got one way in, you got one way out. I'm concerned, very concerned about the traffic. I, I share Susan's assessment. I don't think a light, I think a light here is going to be a disaster. There's, I try to travel this route almost daily, coming down, coming down Riverside and oftentimes turning and going west on Benton. I try not to cut through the streets, but I have done it occasionally. And even now, there are times when the traffic is basically backed up from Orchard Street to to Riverside. If someone's having, if someone's, if there's a big truck or something coming out of Orchard Street where they can't turn into Orchard Street. There's times now that it backs up, traffic definitely backs up going east from Orchard Street to Riverside very regularly, backs up there. And I, I agree, I mean, I think you, you put another stop sign, a stoplight in there, they got no place to go. And you had, you had that many units, that many cars. We already, we heard mention of the previous traffic study indicating that this was a challenged area already. And we're going to add another hundred and eighty nine units coming out of one place, coming out of one. And and that same street, that same street carrying the traffic from come and go from the Hennick Development and from that other development that you like, that other unit that you like so well. So I, I'm very concerned about traffic. I'm very concerned about traffic movement. We also need to remind ourselves, we just saw a proposal last time or time before for another huge development on the north side of of the tracks, right in the same location, which is going to add, which is going to add a traffic pressure to that entire area in addition to this one. And the other thing, the other thing that is starting to bother me, and I think it's, it may be a conversation we need to have, a greater conversation we need to have, is this loss of affordable housing. We are seeing with with the development north of the tracks, with this development, with many of the developments in, in, in this, in the Riverfront Crossing Zone, to be perfectly honest. We're seeing the loss of what is currently affordable housing being replaced by what's not going to be affordable housing. And, and we've been allowing almost, I, I can't recall anybody who's just, who's opted to choose to build on site in, in, in the neighborhood. They've all opted to pay fee in lieu. I'm not exactly sure where that money is being spent on. I haven't seen any significant number of affordable housing units being built. But I think as we look at these large projects, I think we, you know, have to respond to the community's desire for maintaining affordable housing. And this is one more example of a situation where that's not happening. I am, I am inclined to, to, to vote against this proposal at this time.
Just refer to everybody's memory, so any fee in lieu of has to be spent in the Riverfront Crossings area.
And then where is it going to happen?
I, I don't know, but the city.
Nobody wants to do it.
Well, the city will have to do that because they're the ones collecting money. Discussion.
I'm not going to support it. I, I have too many problems with it. I, I really, I've struggled with this. It's like I had two more weeks to think about it, and I drove over there again, and I just, you know, the comp plan says complementary in mass and scale. And I do not believe if it was one much smaller, you know, if it was just that building in the back and the front had one story things or in some green space, I could go there. It's the single in and out with hundreds of cars and no place for them to, to cut through to get anywhere except to Riverside Drive where you can't park. And again, it's just, you know, I don't vote no very often, but I, I cannot support this.
Further discussion?
I am going to support it. I do think it meets the rezoning criteria. And I like many, I like many of the features of it. I like that the wraparound building, I think that's great. I think you can control who parks in that facility. And, you know, you were talking about the where you can. So I'm going to, I'm going to support it. I think it meets the zoning, the rezoning criteria.
Chad?
So I like the three building layout. I think that's feasible in spirit of the master plan objectives. I think that's a much better option than the single large unit. I think the challenges with traffic flow, I think that's a challenge based on location. I don't see how, as a developer, they would overcome that. I think traffic signaling, due to lack of options, probably is the most logical one that I see. My reservations, I think, are similar to what's been expressed, is that this layout looks good. However, upon approval or potential approval, the changes to this layout makes me a little cautious in proceeding forward.
Billy? Okay, Maria, discussion?
Yeah, so I had a question for Ann, and I'm sorry I didn't ask it again, but I, my issue with this project is that it seems just so dense that I'm, I'm having a very hard time imagining how each unit will have enough lighting, enough windows, you know, each bedroom with a window to the exterior. It just seems very dense. And if the, the units don't have, if the units didn't have, for example, cross ventilation, that would cause a higher use of like air conditioning in the summer, things like that, that don't seem sustainable. I do, I do like the parking underneath one of the buildings, but I think if I understood what Brian was saying, is that only one, one building will have parking underneath. So then I was thinking, like, how is this going to be accessible? Because if there's a person with, like, a person with disabilities in living in another building, they will have to park on the farther north building and then walk or take an accessible path to the other building. I'm also concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about the, the access to the fire, to the fire truck. I mainly, I, I think I agree with what Billy, Mark and and Susan said, I don't want to repeat everything. And the main concern is also that we're demolishing or taking affordable housing to put something that is not going to be affordable. And I do understand that that's an option for the developer to pay, but I, I still don't think it's, it's the right decision. My main concern is that it seems like too dense. And like Mark said, it doesn't seem like a transition, transitional area. It just seems like we go from single family on the left to like a very dense, three very dense buildings three very dense buildings with no green space. And I was wondering, Ann, if, um, there is like, um, the floor area ratio? That is, is that required? Is there a, a number required by code?
Not in this zone. This zone is regulated by form and mass and setbacks and scale. Not FAR or, uh, dwelling units per acre.
Okay. So sometimes I, I think my Welsh might know more about this because he's lit. He, uh, I think he's lit certified, but, um, I think that Lit recommends that when buildings are so dense and they have like a one-point-five um, FAR or FAR. They recommend to have like green roofs, but if they're thinking about putting solar panels on the roof, that's not gonna be an option either. So, um, right now, I, I don't think I'm gonna support this project.
Uh, just to clarify one point, Maria, the north building doesn't have parking under, underneath it. It's actually gonna be a parking ramp with liner buildings around it.
Oh. Okay.
Just clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
Uh, but then the patios, that would be, um, do you see that there are two patios in the middle? Right? So then the parking would be in between those two patios or like wrapping those patios? I think I don't understand.
Can't understand. Uh, I can't answer that. Brian, could you give us a quick on how the parking would be around those two atrium areas?
Yeah, you bet. So, so what you're seeing with those two atrium areas is the top level. There is no parking on the top level. Those atriums are there to provide what Maria was just actually talking about, the windows and the light into the unit so that all units have windows. Below that level would be parking ramp internally. And then with the liner units on the outside, all windows and light exposed to the outside from there.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing no dis- further discussion, we have motion by Science, second by Elliot. All those in favor of this application, please signify by saying aye. Aye. So let's see, we got Elliot. And was there anybody else who voted aye? And Wade, thank you. All right, those who oppose this motion, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right, so nay is Padron. Townsend. Science. And Craig? And Craig. So motion is defeated three to four. All right, next item on the agenda. Item number five, consideration of meeting minutes for December seven, twenty twenty-two. Are there any major additions or corrections to the minutes from that date?
Nope.
Could I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Elliot is our second.
Second.
Second by Science, discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Maria?
Hi.
Aye, so that's approved, seven zero. Item number six, consideration of meeting minutes, December twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Any addition, major additions or corrections?
I was a little disappointed there wasn't more explicit reference to, uh, council.
That was a grievous error.
Grievous error of the, of the minute. Commissioner Townsend's absent.
Accuracy of the minutes are definitely in question. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Science, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, saying nay. Those prove seven zero. Number seven, planning is zoning information. Oh, uh, let me correct, item number six, we have six zero in favor and then I presume an extension due to absence of Townsend. Nice. So you're absent at the meeting on December twenty-one. I was gonna clarify. Thank you. Item number seven, planning is zoning information, Ann?
I, I have no updates.
Any, um, information to be shared by members of the commission? Sue, do you have any wisdom for us?
Yeah, we have, yeah, I've been here for a while. Take your time, take your time.
If you'd have said, do I have anything to say?
Uh, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wade. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, uh, adjournment is approved, seven to zero. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.